This is a meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education, February 13, 2020. Can I have a meeting or a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person or corporation and collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education meeting on February 13th here at the district office. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, upcoming events. On February 18th, the Hyde Park Education Foundation will having a meeting at the Havilland Middle School at 6:00 PM. On Tuesday, February 25th, Avalon Middle School Pops Concert at Havilland Middle School that starts at 7:00 PM.
I was just thinking we missed something, so I'm going to add it. What were you, the Pops?
Yes.
Yes.
And on February 27th will be the next Board of Ed meeting here at the district office, 7:00 PM. And Friday, February 28th, the district STEAM Expo and Science Fair at FDR High School from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And I believe there's a special event for Hyde Park Education Foundation.
Yeah, yes. Leap into Comedy on February 29th, the Hyde Park Education Foundation is hosting a family-friendly comedy night at Capola's. It's dinner and comedy. Tickets are $50 and include the comedians, the emcee, a full dinner, and all of the proceeds do go to the education foundation and they support a lot of enrichment programs for our students through teacher grants. And just as an aside, one of the comedians will be Father Chuck from St. James Episcopal Church, and I am particularly looking forward to having him entertain us that evening. And the emcee for the evening is Dwayne Olson, a former graduate of FDR who was heavily involved in our theater program. So come out to support the Hyde Park Education Foundation on the leap year day, February 29th.
Okay, the agenda, we do have one modification to the agenda. We will be adding 11.9. That's where we're nominating our candidate for BOSI School Board, Hyde Park resident Gully Sanford. And we'll be able to hear from him and under right behind superintendent's report. Can I have a motion to adjust the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. And on to pride.
All right, we will start with our official pride. So we'd like to call up Matthew Sweet, and I believe Cameron isn't here. So there are two students that we would like to recognize this evening, and we are so very, very proud of you, Matthew, and also of Cameron. We've worked, we'll take pictures too, we'll have a moment for that. We've worked very hard to bring in STEM initiatives into our school, so it is truly worthy of taking a moment to pause when one of our students who has made himself available to all of the initiatives that we have and actually enter a challenge. So Matthew is part of our Project Lead the Way program, and as a surprise announcement, because I just found out yesterday, Matthew is the 2020 salutatorian, so this is the very first congratulations. So we were notified that Cameron Johnson and Matthew Sweet entered a Congressional App Challenge sponsored by Senator Delgado. Is it Senator Delgado? Did I get that right? And this congressman, representative, okay, I knew I had it wrong. So Matthew and Cameron invented an app for a phone. I'm not, I don't know if I can say iPhone, but an app for a phone. And I'm going to, is it putting you on the spot if I ask you to say what that app is?
I can explain it.
Great, this will be warm up for your speech at graduation, so. And totally on the spot.
Yeah, so pretty much it's called Panachat. It's for any student who is in trouble or in need and feels peer pressured. They have an app that looks like a game, but if you do these certain moves on the app, you can turn it into a messaging app without actually opening your messaging app. So you can like send a discreet message to anyone you want, anyone of your contacts, if you need help without opening the messaging app, and other people can see that. So it's just a discreet way to show it to your peers and not have them look at it, so. Pretty much that.
Great. So as I had heard it one other time explained, if you're at a party and you decide you want to leave, you can incognito call for that ride home from a parent or other trusted adult. So we would just like to give you a certificate recognizing that you won the 2019 Congressional App Challenge, that you were one of the winners. We are very proud of you on both counts, salutatorian and this award, and we wish you all the best of luck, so congratulations. And you're going to get some pictures, give everybody a chance to picture them. We'd like to thank all the parents in the audience for coming to help Matthew be recognized.
Where's the paper?
You'll get your picture taken quite a bit with us in the next.
Yep.
That's a good thing. Sure.
Ready, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you very much.
And as we always tell all of our students that come during the pride section, you do not have to stay. We appreciate that you go home and do your homework and keep up all the excellent work. So please, you know, unless you want to see our budget presentation, we have some other students who are here on assignment, so they need to stay a little bit longer. So again, congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Congratulations. As for any additional pride, Rachel, our student board representative is out sick tonight, so we don't have our normal pride. Does anybody else have something to share?
The one thing I was going to say was I recently attended the Violet Avenue School STEM Fair. I attended it with my son, and we saw Doug, and we had a good time talking to parents and to students. It was really interesting. There was one parent I spoke to who actually teaches at a local college teaches physics, and he commented that this is where it all starts, and you know, having the kids think creatively, the four Cs. So it was really exciting. The parents were very happy to be there, and I think Doug and I had a good time.
We did. I actually brought my mega catapult, made in medieval fashion with twisted ropes and whatnot, and that was a big hit. But I also went to the North Park One and the Ralph Smith STEM Fair. We had a meeting Friday, Tuesday, so I missed the Netherwood one, but they were all very well attended by parents. I thought it was really a good event. Every one of them, there's actually some new science projects that I hadn't seen before, so that's kind of cool.
Yeah, Aviva, you want to talk about the a cappella?
Oh, yeah. So I got to go to the a cappella invitational, and it was five schools, but Germantown I think had a early closing, so they weren't able to be there. So we had both our two groups perform, and it was just so much fun. I mean, I love a cappella, so it was really great. Thank you. And I'm not sure if we always host, but it was wonderful to host.
Last couple of years.
Yeah, so it was four districts in total.
I'll just comment that the Ralph R. Smith STEM Fair, she also hosted the Principal's Challenge. This is something Melissa started last year where she does four principal challenges a year. They are really well attended. This one was an Ozobot Challenge. I would love to get myself a little Ozobot, and families could come in and build a race course for these little Ozobots that would change direction depending on the color of the, maybe you can describe it better than I can.
They had a sheet that had various commands, turn left, turn right, go for straight ahead, and go slow or go fast, I can't remember the other one. So they laid out a track to get from point A to point B, and you could score points along the way on different, how many turns you made. That Ozobot, is that what you call it? Okay. Actually, it will follow a black line no matter where it goes, but it doesn't know what to do when it comes to a T. It may go left and it may go right. So you can tell it ahead of time with these little strips of tape that people were just coloring in with magic markers. I thought it was a really cool experiment. And the kids and the parents were really involved in it. I mean, they were really into it.
They were really into it, yeah. Our swim team, our boys swim team is doing really well, and we had a qualifier already.
Running.
Lydia Reining's son, I can't remember his first, is it Matthew Reining? So congratulations, the boys swim team. The girls and boys basketball teams are off the charts. The girls' basketball team in particular is going all the way, but it's, in fact, tonight is their senior night, so there's a big celebration and a lot of recognition. And last but certainly not least, I attended the Interact Club, the FDR Interact Club, which is a high school version of the Rotary. Their sole purpose is community service. Lauren Vacolo at the high school, high school teacher, is the advisor. The club has been in existence a number of years now. Some of you may remember I was the advisor for five years, so I just wanted to visit, I like to visit the leadership groups, the SGO groups, but I was very impressed with the Interact Club going strong. They did a children's book drive over the holidays and got five, some over 500 books to donate to children in need. They're right now doing a drive for the SPCA, collecting donations. And their April activity is they will be selling Hawaiian leis at the high school, and April is Autism Awareness Month, and they will donate all their proceeds to autism. So again, we talked last time about students involved in community service and leadership roles, and that was just another fine example.
Any more pride? Okay, moving on to superintendent's report.
Nothing other than what's already on the agenda, but I believe at this time we would actually like to invite Gully Sanford up to the podium. Gully has graciously stepped forward to be a representative on the Duchess County School Boards. I'm going to let, I know that Gully will fill you in on his background, but I will say for a few years now, a great service to our community in the arts and in other youth programs that he's become very involved in recently, so, and has quite the background in education. So I will turn it over to Gully.
Well, you're very kind. Thank you very much, Dr. Right. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the board, superintendent, assistant superintendent, this is a great, great privilege to step before you. I'm actually a Hyde Park resident, and so the first mayor culpa is this is the first time I've attended a meeting of the school board of the district in which I live. And that's only to say that you're doing such a wonderful job. You didn't need me to come and be lurking in the seats, but no. Retired from 35 years in the regional theater movement and then 10 years in higher education, operating a program called Gear Up, which was a federal, is a federal program, a little like the Trio Programs, Educational Talent Search, and Upward Bound, that help low-income and first-generation students stay in high school and move on to prepare for post-secondary success, whether it's directly into the career, into the military, or on into either two-year or four-year colleges. And it was a huge pride for me to be involved in that way. I served a term, six-year term, on the Colorado State Board of Education. I represented Denver, and Denver is a district with about 60% free and reduced lunch, maybe up to 70% free and reduced lunch, and very diverse, it's majority-minority school district. It was an enormous privilege for me to try to close the opportunity gaps for these young people. One of the, one of the programs I came to embrace and love is career and technical education, previously known as vocational education, but under the Perkins Four Act and now the Perkins Five Act, we found that career technical not only helped young people who perhaps needed to go to work as soon as they graduated high school, or wanted to go into the trades, or wanted to learn entrepreneurial skills, not only helped them to succeed, but also exposure to and participation in career technical education is reflected in improved academic achievement. So it's essentially the new three Rs of relevance and rigor and relationships that we put together in that exposure to career and technical. So forgive me, I'm a passionate proponent of that, but I know that the BOSI does a great deal more than that, and obviously special education, adult education, English language acquisition. BOSI is a place where our youth from all over the county, whether they come from relatively affluent areas or relatively impoverished areas, they're coming together and they're learning skills which they share and gaining knowledge that they own for the rest of their lives. So a successful BOSI, I believe, is a tremendous catalyst for excitement and enthusiasm and motivation right across the, right, right, right across the county. I also understand, and I'm going to stay to hear the budget presentation, because I understand there are certain complications this year around the budget and the relationship with BOSI. So my commitment to you would be to say, to try to ensure that the services that you require in Hyde Park are being addressed and being delivered in the most efficient manner possible, and that the BOSI is responsible, the Board of Cooperative Educational Services is responsive and responsible. This is a very interesting time because, as you know, the regions are reconsidering the graduation measures, and it's across the country, a tremendously interesting time because I do believe we're going to move into areas of two things are going to happen. I think we are going to identify demonstrations of proficiency that are not necessarily limited to paper and pencil tests, portfolios, internships, that kind of thing, but also I think we're going to see, and I hope we are going to see, a delegation of responsibility and authority to the local level. And I come from having worked in Colorado, which is a fiercely local control state, as perhaps you know, and I think that will be very exciting because I put a great deal of trust in the local practitioners and the school district's ability to know better than really anybody else what, or how to deliver that knowledge for what a young person needs to know and be able to do in order to succeed. So that, that's really why I want to do this. At this point, there are three vacancies and two incumbents are running again, but there is an unfilled vacancy used to be held by a representative of the Poughkeepsie City School District. The Poughkeepsie City School District seems to have welcomed my interest, so I don't think they're going to be putting forward a nominee themselves. As you know, Hyde Park doesn't have a resident who serves on the BOSI's board, and I would consider it very great privilege to be that resident. I've visited with a couple of local boards, and I have the endorsements now of Wapingers and Red Hook. I'm very grateful for that, and I'll be spending most of the next couple of weeks wandering around the county, visiting the boards. And then one final thought, and I know I've gone on too long, which is you're very gracious to let me not speak under public comment, but I do want to say that this complements very happily something that I do for the county. I serve on the county's Youth Board Coordinating Council, and that council has the charge of implementing the county executive's path to promise, this initiative in six key areas, safety and basic material needs, and mental health and physical health, and family and community relationships, and learning, to provide the services that our young people age zero to 19 need in order to proceed either to careers or to college, or to success in careers and college and civic life. And I'm very grateful to acknowledge that Assistant Superintendent Kafka has been very helpful to us with this as we engage with our youth to try to get their feedback in these areas of what it is the county can do to improve the opportunities for our young people. I think that dovetails nicely with the work of the BOSI's, and hopefully we can combine forces there in order to ensure that success awaits these young people. So it would be a great honor to serve, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have, but more important than that, and I know we have at least one expert on the board here in Hyde Park in career and technical education, I really welcome your guidance. I'm an old stage manager, that's what I did backstage of regional theaters for many, many years, and I respond best to people coming up to me and saying, here's what can be improved. And we would like to, I would like to be part of the movement of the Duchess County BOSI's to prove itself, let's hope, the model BOSI's, as I believe it once was for the state of New York. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for taking this up.
Very much. I promise it will not be my last visit.
That sounds like a threat.
Next up is our budget update from Linda, Assistant Superintendent.
So, thank you. Tonight's presentation is really a way to facilitate a discussion with the board. We do need some direction regarding our tax cap. It's due to the state on March 1st, and I would like to be able to have that as part of the presentation that I'll give on February 27th. So there is not much information in the presentation, but we do have information from Bernie Donegan's presentation, from Chuck Bastin, from the last meeting, if you want to review that. So basically, there's two things that I'd like to talk about tonight. We have, we should make a decision on how we'll handle our local share of debt service. As you know, with our current capital project, we increased our local share, which is basically our, the difference between what we pay in debt and what we receive back in aid, to about $1.85 million for two years. It was this year and next year. But before that, our local share of debt service had been around $1.56 million. So when Chuck was here, he talked about our options for our next capital project, and we do have a drop-off coming in debt service in May of 2023. So we should have a vote for our next capital project in May of 2021, so not this coming May, but next year. If we leave the local share of debt service at $1.85, where it is now, we could afford a $21.6 million project without affecting, without changing the amount that the taxpayers pay for capital work right now. If we bring it back down to $1.56 million, our next capital project could be $13.6 million without changing how our taxpayers are contributing towards those capital projects. So if we make the change, we'll see a decrease from our current year levy to the next levy of about $27 for a home valued at $250,000. And that does not include any STAR exemptions, so the decrease would be, actually quite, it would be lower if we considered the effect of STAR.
Can I just restate that so I make sure that I?
Yeah, please.
I mean, it's late, it's been a long day. So the point is that the financing that we currently have in place gives us a local debt share of $1.85 million per year.
Right.
And that's what the levy is going to be based on for the next two years, or we're going to be at that level for them?
It is for this current year.
This current year and next year.
Could be for next year.
Okay.
The presentation that Chuck gave us, he showed us the two options, if we stay at the $1.85, or if we come back to $1.56, but in his calculations, it was if we brought, came back to $1.56 in 2020, 21.
Right, right. So the question is whether we now have created a new base.
Exactly.
At the $1.85.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the difference is approximately $27 per year for a $200, a home value to $250,000, for the sake of having somewhere in the area of about $7 or $8 million worth of additional capital to make badly needed improvements to our buildings, which we've already identified, designed.
Yeah.
Pulled back on.
Yes, we did have to pull back, yeah.
Yeah, when we originally went forward with the, when we were originally looking at the project we're doing now, we were considering doing.
Multiple buildings.
Multiple buildings, and I think the first budget that came from the architects was $36 million.
Right.
And we brought it down to 26.
Right, which by the way, by the time we get around to doing the next project, we're going to have a new building condition survey that's going to give us a whole new list of.
We won't have the new building condition survey before we plan this project because our next building condition survey will be done in 2022. We'll have the updated.
Oh, I thought Hyde Park was 21.
Well, maybe it's 21, but it won't be before, it won't be, I think it's 22, and it won't be before we have to plan the next project.
Right.
Because this would be for a vote next year, so we'd have to.
Yeah, we'd have to have it.
They have to do the visual inspection of the buildings this year, and we certainly, in addition to the work we did not complete before, there were also the second tier of things like roofs that have not gotten better.
Yeah, and we will have some, we have some presentations coming up from facilities too, about the, where we are with the current building condition survey, what has been taken care of and what's still open.
So is this something that has to go into the budget vote then this May? Like for, we have to have a capital improvement project?
No, the, the vote for the next capital project will be next year, for May 2021. However, our debt service that we're planning for next year is dependent on what we plan to do with that budget vote. So if we want to leave it at the $1.85 where it is now, there won't have, we won't have any. any effect on the taxpayers for next year, but then we're also committing to staying at that $1.85 million for, you know, the next few years until we have another drop-off.
I don't know if people remember from last, was it last year or two years, where we actually bumped up our debt service? And actually, Perry, you made some really compelling arguments about why we should go up and not stay the same. So we had a one-time bump up, and now the rubber hits the road. Do we keep that as the new threshold, or do we go back down to what it was previously? Is that sparking a memory? Okay.
As we, we do get an exclusion from the tax cap for the capital, the capital work. So that's why it's important for me to know that before we have the budget vote.
And this is just?
Or before, I'm sorry, before I do the tax cap calculation.
Tonight, it's just FYI, no decision.
No, well, I do need some guidance tonight because the tax cap calculation is due to New York State by March 1st. We do have the opportunity to amend it if we make changes, but for the budget planning, it's best if we really know where our tax cap will be by that point.
Are you looking?
Yeah. Well, I do have some more information about the BOCES Capital Project 2. We can look at that, and then.
That's why we finished the report, and then we'll discuss.
Yeah, okay. All right. So part of the capital exclusion, which is new this year, is from the BOCES capital funding, or, I'm sorry, the BOCES capital project. In the past, we hadn't been able to exclude that from our tax cap for 2020, 21. We will be able to do that. Just so you know, there is some guidance out there, but there's still a lot of, a lot of open questions. Our financial advisors still aren't sure exactly how it should be treated. They did provide information for tonight, but they wanted to make sure that we all understand its draft because they'll be gathering new information from New York State, too. Tomorrow, there's a meeting of the Dutchess County Business Officials, and BOCES will be there, so we'll be talking about what we can exclude and can't. The state had told us that BOCES would provide the exclusion number for us, but that was news to BOCES, I think, so that's just something that we'll be discussing tomorrow. When I, when we have the, there's some calculations further on, we're only considering the capital project, but there may be other capital expenses that we could exclude. So when we originally talked about the capital project for BOCES, we talked about the three options that we had. We could either pay cash, we have payments due every year for three years. We made our first payment in July of $392,000. Another option was to fund the, to fund it, or finance it, I'm sorry. So we did have a resolution passed by the board in December of 2018, so financing is an option for us. And we could also use fund balance when we have it to make a payment. We had originally planned for this coming school year that we would use fund balance from some additional aid that we got from New York State last year, but I want to show the board the option for financing because it may be a better option for us now that we can exclude it from the tax cap. When we first talked about using the fund balance, that wasn't an option at that time. So here's just information for the BOCES Capital Project. It shows in total, we have to pay the $3.2 million. We'll get aid back from New York State, our cost after that would be about $1.6 million. Like I said, we already paid the $392,000, and in July, July 2020, we owe that $1.5 million. So our plan right now is to just pay cash for it, which is an increase to the budget with no, we didn't think there was an ability to raise taxes for it. This slide is just a summary. I do have some detail on slides after this that we can look at, but here on the darker shaded columns, it shows what the tax cap would look like in future years if we financed the BOCES project. And on the right, in the lighter shaded columns, it shows what it would look like if we paid cash. One of the concerns that I have is that when we have a capital exclusion from the, from the tax levy, it actually drives our tax levy up, but when that exclusion comes off and we're no longer making payments, it goes right down. So you can see, even though in the first few years, we would have a higher tax cap to pay for the BOCES project, it would then come down, and there would be years where we would be nearly, or, you know, less than one, less than 2%, I'm sorry. The way that we looked at it for financing over 15 years, it sort of smoothes out the tax levy increase year to year, so it'd be easier for us to budget. It's also easier on the taxpayer, and in the end, we'd have an ability to raise taxes even more because our base number would be higher. So by 2024, 25, our base number for our tax levy would be about $1.5 million more if we financed the project than if we paid cash.
So the point is, it becomes a more level increase year over year, and at the same time, it allows our levy to rise in a more steady rate to keep up with all the other expenses that we've got in our operation.
And it helps with the problem we have for the next budget year because we had the new staff that we added last year that were paid through a grant that have to be moved to the general fund next year. We were looking at a large budget gap, and if we didn't have to pay the $1.5 million all next year, it would reduce that gap significantly.
Do you know how much the interest would be?
Yeah, I have the estimate here. So if we finance over 15 years, which this is the tax levy impact from that, the estimated interest expense is $1.1 million over the life of the payments over the 15 years.
You had mentioned in the cash option that the budget would have to increase, or we wouldn't look to take this from some reserve fund?
We don't have a reserve fund for that. We did save the money that we got in additional aid last year. They made an adjustment for us from like 2003, and we just left that in unassigned fund balance, and that's what we had originally planned to use it for, was for the capital payment.
Yeah, under the cash one, the big problem is '23, '24, '24, '25, where the tax levy stays the same, but our expenses are going to go up, and so that's a difficult hump to get over. I'm not a real fan of financing, but evening it out like that is way better in terms of the progression of the tax levy than actually paying.
Well, and this also raises the base as we go into '25, '26, '26, '27. I mean, so there's a compounding element here that the tax cap is stifling. I mean, you know, it's.
Yeah, because what we would do, because it's a 15-year payment, too. So this actually, we're assuming, in this scenario here, these two scenarios, we assumed that we would have our capital, or, I'm sorry, our debt service at the $1.85 million, and then we, this is added on top of that. So this would look a little different if we went back down to the $1.56, but we'd still end up with a smoother levy increase year to year, and at the end, we would also be able to raise taxes.
Plus, we essentially get the $392 back, all right? We already spent $392, so if we're financing the whole thing.
We're not going to finance the $392. So this is if we financed the $1.5 that's due in 2020, and the payment due, yeah. So that was the slide that I had shown when we were first looking at it. It's just that we've already made that $392,000 payment.
So did I hear you correctly, if there's two things, $1.5 and $1.2, $2.7? The interest on that over 15 years is $1.5 million?
No, $1.1.
$1.1. Yeah, and I'm sure.
The interest rate.
Yeah, and that's definitely high, too. Our financial advisors are very conservative.
Chuck Bass, yeah, always.
I mean, what is that rate? That's, that's 30% rate?
So they assumed, I think, no, I think it was 3%. They assumed, I'm having a hard time reading it. They, oh, they're assuming 5% for the bond rate and 3.25% for the bond anticipation note. And we've been, you know, I don't want to predict out in the future exactly where it would be, but last time we did borrowing, it was around 2. Yeah.
Bernie Donegan's office will always be conservative in that they'll, they'll make sure that not to look too rosy.
Yeah. And I do have, so I do have some other slides. It's really just the detail of this information here. This slide shows, the first column is our current year, that's our tax levy, the tax cap calculation that we presented last year, and then just showing what it would be in 2021 if we financed or if we didn't finance. Again, we're assuming that this would be, we would be at the $1.8 million or $1.85 million for our other debt service. And then there really isn't a lot of information in here that's different than the summary slide because we also made assumptions that our pilot payments would be the same every year, and that the tax-based growth factor, which is the factor for changes in real property, it's like the, if there's actually new properties or buildings that are improved, that number is reflected in that growth factor, and we assumed it would be the same for every year going forward. And that our allowable levy growth factor would be 1.81%, which is actually, you know, on the low side. So, and then here we show 2021, '22, and '22, '23.
So from what you're looking for from the board tonight, are you looking for us to make a decision tonight?
Yes.
And do we have to make a resolution for that?
No, we don't need a resolution.
You're just looking for guidance at this point.
Yeah. So for the tax cap, I just need to know, should we be assuming that our local share is going to stay at the $1.85, or do we want to bring it back down to $1.56? And then do we want to finance the next capital project payment, or the next BOCES, the next two years for BOCES payments? So again, I'll go back here just to show you the effect on the tax cap.
I'm in favor of the financing and the 21 million project.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think it's a prudent thing to do. I think the district needs it. I think that we've got capital projects that we need to get done, and the other advantage is that it's going to, it's going to increase that allowable levy, and we need to be doing that.
Right, absolutely.
If not, we're leaving money on the table that we'll never get again.
I agree.
Any disagreement?
Thank you very much.
All right, back to budgeting now, Linda. Thank you, Linda. Good news, very good news.
So at this time, can we have a motion for public participation?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If you would like to address the board, please go to the microphone, state your name and address, and this is a reminder, we'll be stating every meeting, first public participation is limited to three minutes. So if anybody would like to address the board?
Come on.
Seeing none public.
Okay, Stevie.
No, I just think you should make it clear that's three minutes per person.
Yes, not three minutes. Okay. Three minutes per person.
You've got two minutes and 35 seconds.
Thank you, Steve. You might get extra credit if you actually come up and just say hello.
Okay, did state public participation is now closed?
Not yet.
So at this time, public participation is now closed, seeing that no one else would come in to address the board. Board discussion? Do we have any committee reports?
Special Ed met with Heather the other day, and we just reviewed the kind of progress. She said the new hires in the elementary, elementary schools have been going well, coverage is better, and she's not putting out as many fires as she used to, so she's, she's happy with the new staff.
And she did say to expect a boatload of education reports coming in closer to the end.
Okay, the policy committee met as usual, and we're still turning through, and I think we're making good progress as usual. So you'll see a number of first considerations on this agenda and also second, so.
I can, I can report that the Dutchess County School Board Association had their monthly meeting. We had a presentation, and I'm ill-prepared because I don't have any names, but the topic was a discussion of farm to school. Food grown on school, and it's, it's broader than just food being grown on school property that's then served as part of the lunch program. There are large, there's a process. We had a representative from, I think it was a Wapinsers School District Food Service Director, and there was an executive director from, it's a not-for-profit that is gardening on what was the old Vassar Farms property, that they, too, are running a program in which school-aged children are coming out and getting firsthand experience in gardening and food nutrition. One of the things that she was emphasizing is the love of kale that the students have expressed, and, you know, and it's, and it may be one of the first times that many, many young children have had an opportunity to have fresh vegetables, or perhaps fresh vegetables they've never had before. And it's, she finds it very rewarding and making a big difference, and it has a much larger expansion because if a family, it's risky for a family to buy fresh food, fresh vegetables, and then only to have family members, primarily children, say, no, I'm not going to eat that, or refuse to eat it. But if they get introduced to it in the school, and they start to say, well, you know, I will eat that. So mom and dad go out and buy fresh fruits and vegetables, kids eat it, everybody's doing better than, than buying processed food. So there's a, there's, it's a big story. It's, it's got far-reaching implications, great program, and it was good to hear, and I hope that we try to do as much as we can in this district in the same way.
Just to piggyback on that, my wife's a master gardener, and they had a meeting Tuesday of the cooperative extension, and that particular topic came up, and the cooperative extension has people who will come to the schools and work with the school to help them plant a garden.
Yep, yep. She did, she did mention that.
It is, yes.
Good, good point.
Do we have a board volunteer to report on the DLT meeting?
So I attended the DLT meeting.
Thank you, Ed.
As did Jeff.
Yes.
And Greer obviously did a great job leading the discussion. We were talking about a follow-up to the recent article in the New York Times highlighting all the great things about Hyde Park and trying to build upon that. It was great turnout from the parents of the committee. I was very impressed. There must have been about 40 people in the room, I would say.
Yeah, it's a big one, yeah.
So really big turnout and so forth. We were doing a lot with discussing and collaborating, and we had the technology. We were in Google Drive, and we were working on some, you know, some visions moving forward with the committee. I think maybe we'll let Greer jump in and talk a little bit about it because she led the discussion very well.
Thank you, Ed. Yeah, it was, it was actually a very productive meeting. We collaborated on designing our story, and earlier in the year, we had the, we had a presentation from BOCES on what, what is true branding. And so we are looking at putting together a video, oh, and Carl was there, too, yeah, to brand, to tell our story, who we are. And in a very short period of time, it was amazing how we had started to put down what are our values in the previous meeting, and by this meeting, we actually wrote the script of what is our story. It needs a little refining, but the story is there. So we will be putting together a promotional video production of who we are. Fortuitously, the county executive, Marcus Molinaro, is also working with a company that is doing the video. that is doing the video portion. They come in with drones. It's very inexpensive, and so they will film our script and put it to a story. And it was just amazing. Everybody got to write who our story was based on our values, and then we collectively went through and chose the best line from each of the five groups. So, it really pops. It's going to be very powerful. The promotional video will then link to the Duchess County video. So, anybody visiting Duchess County will be able to click on Hyde Park Schools. I hope we're going to be the first school district up there. The second portion of what we did was we tested out a collaborative and, and online tool for collaboration to get feedback from the community. And so, we anticipate after we're finished with the budget, being able to reach out to the community to have them weigh in in a collaborative fashion versus a survey, what they feel should be, what students should know and be able to do upon graduation, what are the skills. So, we tested it out with our district.
Actually, it was quite fun.
Yeah, it is. It's a fun tool.
It filtered out my answer.
Aviva is going to use it this year, too. We, we had added the new mental health staff. Aviva's going to use that as a collaboration tool to measure the effectiveness from the three buildings that received extra staff. So, we'll use it to inform the next iteration of our strategic plan. Back to the question, we're going to ask the community. And then I overheard the board members talking at the end that this would also be a good tool later on when we're approaching our next capital project to get some weigh-in from the community. So, it was a very interactive meeting. Just a reminder, we do have student board members on the district leadership team, as well as community members. And actually, our student board member came to this meeting, too, because I met with her to talk about her project, her presentation, and she wanted to get input from the student body. So, I said, "Well, come to the district leadership team because we're going to look at a collaboration tool." So, she may be utilizing that to reach out to the student body as well. So, very productive. Thank you, Ed, and Carl, and Jeff. It was, it was a good meeting.
Any others? Okay, moving on. Can I have a motion for consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion for 11.1, special education placements?
Second.
Could I, could I interrupt for a minute? I know, it's going to mess the whole thing up, Jay, I'm sorry. On the board discussion, we were just going to touch base on the AP proposal and the nomination for the, is that something we need to do under nine, board discussion?
Nine point one.
Basically, the follow-up on the AP proposal is if we want to look at it again, it'll have to be for the following year because the course guide and the budget go.
Yeah, the timeline was already really short when Mike Correlli gave the presentation, and since it wasn't a clear voice of support to move forward right now, we are going to have to put that on hold for a year. The good news about that is if, if we do want to move forward with that proposal, there's really plenty of time to get it into the course guidebook for the following year. We were already going to be sending letters, making phone calls, because it wasn't going to make it in the course guidebook anyway. So, that's the status of that. So, it's still an open question. It's not a no or a yes, but we know that you want to talk about it some more.
Okay, we were on, well, and I think, but I think the point was. We're doing that here.
Oh, okay, okay.
We moved it down.
Thank you. That, okay, that took care of that one. Thank you.
Okay.
Back to the consent agenda. Doug seconded, but I didn't hear.
Who, who did the? Carl.
Carl did, sorry. Thank you.
I didn't either. Okay, can I, I need discussion on special education placements. All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2, health and welfare services provided to Hyde Park Central School District students?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have an old version of the agenda.
Opposed? One extension.
One up to who?
Denise.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I missed it. Oh, I'm for it.
I was, I distracted her.
She's for it now.
It's entirely my fault.
So, sorry.
She was slow.
A little weary.
Okay, motion for 11.3, overnight field trip, Myrtle Beach softball?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I was going to have a discussion.
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to slow down a little bit on the ability for discussion.
We're still okay with parents driving somebody else's kids, or every single parent on the team is going? Is that the idea?
Every single parent is going. They drive their own children. That was all a policy change a number of years ago, and.
I just want to make sure.
Yep. Well, I don't know if you're okay with it, but we did change the policy a while ago to permit that with sign-off. And the other question was the chaperone, and there is a second chaperone.
Okay.
So, the, I mean, what, what I would say is that we, the point is that the field trip starts in South Carolina. That's what I would say. Because we're not transporting them.
Right. We would check, we would still need to check with our insurance carrier on that.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I know that that's the way other districts do it, is that they say that, that the, it starts wherever we take responsibility for the students is where.
It ends there, then.
It starts and ends there.
Okay.
Yep.
Tricky, tricky way of getting around it.
So, you're going to come back?
And, and that's communicated right from the beginning. When the, when the, when the trip is planned, it's an understanding that that's where it starts, that there's no expectation of transportation by the district.
But if that's the case, we probably wouldn't have a say, and you have to drive your own kid, and you can drive everyone's kid.
Right.
If it starts there, then anything goes.
Right. I don't think you could have.
You can have it both ways.
As long as we're not liable.
Well, that's the question.
Wow, yeah, I mean, would we be held into court? Yes. Would we be held liable is a question for the law's people at NYSER.
Yeah, whenever, can I just add?
Yep.
Whenever there is an issue with the buses, the, the student, the parents' insurance has to take the claim. Even for like a reg, whenever there's a regular incident or accident in district, that's the case. It's always on the parents' insurance, auto insurance claim first. And if they don't have it, then it's, it actually goes to someone that lives in their, if there's someone in their household that has auto insurance, it's covered on their policy. But we, you know, we do have student accident insurance for other types of accidents, and our students are covered when they're out of district for an event like a field trip.
So, we charter a bus, and that bus, and there's an accident. You're saying that it's the family's insurance?
I think in that case, the bus, the contractor provides insurance, but when we have our own buses in district, it's not on our insurance, it's on the parents' insurance.
Okay. But going to South Carolina, we would never contemplate taking a school bus to South Carolina. So, we would always look at using.
We have.
We definitely have.
We really have.
No, we, we did one year when, when I was on the board of softball.
Man, that's a long trip on a school bus.
Yeah, and the baseball team, once in a while, still does, just to save money.
All right. Well, I, I would say it's a conversation that we should have with, between either NYSER. I would start with NYSER, see what, what their opinion is of field trips and transportation. Does anybody else agree?
I do agree.
Just to clarify.
Because, I mean, you know, you know, I mean, hate to think of it, but if somebody was in a car accident on the way down, and they're driving their own family, are they there because of us? They're on our field trip that we've approved? You know, I don't know how that falls.
Mike, I, I know you're a historian here. We changed this years ago, and I know we looked at it, we can look at it again, but we've actually been doing it this way now for several years.
Yeah, it used, it used to be anybody could drive anybody, right?
And then, yeah, and we stopped that.
That changed, we stopped that.
But that's not, that's not actually a, a law or a policy, right? That's just our local interpretation that we wanted to do. But like, I know Arlington, I think, at least they used to allow kids to drive other kids, parents to drive other kids and stuff like that. So, it was always, we were allowed to do that, but then it changed to your own kid. And then, one year, it was like a bus. I think we didn't have enough money, so we got the school bus. And then it changed to a charter bus, but it was like $18,000 a year.
Right.
And, and so, you know.
We went back to.
Lobbied and, you know, worked on it and settled down the policy that we have.
That we have now, yeah. And that's been now a number of years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's.
I'm not, I'm not against the policy. It's just, it does, I, I think it's worth looking at with our insurance and just, just asking them.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I, we have talked about it, but I, with them, I don't remember exactly what the response was, but I'll look into it again.
That's the problem, it came up before when we moved to this, but I don't remember the answers.
I can, I can get information.
It just seems like a lot of exposure.
Just question, are we looking to table this to the next meeting? Are we moving to approve?
No, no, I think, I think we have to.
They'll freak out.
No, I don't want to table it.
No, I think we.
Okay. We'll get the answer.
Beats our past practice, and let's, let's just get an answer.
If it was tabled, I was going to let Mike tell them.
Yeah. If we, if we table it, they're just going to walk.
I told Christie's father in the grocery store when I saw him after we tabled it. He's like, "Why didn't I explain to him?" He's like, "Oh."
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, appointment hearing officer alternate?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I have a motion for 11.5, first consideration of policies?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. And motion for 11.6, vendor, Dr. James Medugo.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
The dates on this?
That was this afternoon.
Yeah.
That was today.
Okay. So, the present, I mean, it's happened.
We haven't been billed for it yet.
Okay, this allows us to pay for it.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.7, vendor, ROVIA, Dr. Fang?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Aviva had a question on this.
Yeah, I wanted to say something anyway because it's confusing. We just got billed for August.
And I'm not so worried about that. It made me start thinking, if we have a Chinese-speaking student.
Yes.
Or any speaking, foreign-speaking student with an interpreter, who's to rule out foul play or cheating, right? I mean, no, nobody in that room could understand what's going on. Is, is that session recorded, that somebody could review that later for foul play?
I don't believe it is, but also, we hire the translator. Like, it's not through the family or anything like that.
Sure, but, but it really is open to foul play, right? I mean, if, you know.
I mean, it could always be questioned if the results are out of line or something looks wrong, but there isn't a system of reviewing that either at the state level.
If you're struggling with a question, the interpreter can pick that one. And who's going to question that?
Right.
I just, I'm curious as to, you know, what's the check and balance in that situation? And it sounds like there aren't any.
Yeah, I mean, the, the state regulations don't contemplate that.
Okay, that's it.
So, this was actually for services that were performed last August?
Yeah, and we had a contract that was for this year that, and we had one that was for last year. And I had assumed that it covered the August, it didn't, and then we just got billed. So, we had to put together a little bridge contract. And so, I said, "In future, we should just have it be a full calendar year with our translators and just keep it there because it, we only pay if we use it." So, if we don't have a student from China, we can have the agreement in place, and then if someone comes, we have it ready.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.8, vendor agreement, Alicia Doblin, consulting services, college prep?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.9, nomination of Gully Stanford for BOSI's school board?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say I'm enthusiastic about having Gully Stanford, the potential being on the BOSI's board. I think our local BOSI's, as well as it does, there's an incredible amount of potential there that I'd like to see it, you know, pushed up a notch. There's, I think it's, it's time, it's appropriate, the capital project is going to give them a new facility. I think that there's, all the energy that we can put toward BOSI's will pay dividends huge in this area in the decades to come. Thank you for your service.
And I've had the pleasure of knowing Gully for about six years now. We've worked together.
You won't hold that against him.
And we've worked on a committee together in Pleasant Valley, and just, I can't recommend him highly enough.
Okay.
I just want to thank you for running for the board.
Yes, I want to say thank you, too. I was very impressed with your background. I think you really have a pulse on how important CTE is. Every student does not necessarily have to go to college, per se, right away, and I think you understand that.
It would be nice to see the change of the perspective, I think. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, time for second public participation. Can I have a motion for?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please state your name and your address, and public participation is limited to one minute per person.
And she's speaking, although she's not in the district.
Yes.
All right. Hello, my name is April Yerak, and I live in the Arlington Central School District. And I know for a fact that with the transportation on a field trip, we are only allowed to take the bus that the school provides, and we are only allowed to do that unless signed a form for the parent to take the student home early from the field trip or.
We have that, too.
To take the home, the student home late from a field trip. They are not allowed to not use the bus. If they are going to the place at the same time, then they are only allowed to take the bus. So, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
You're going to regret not saying something.
She's like, "I don't think so."
Any, any comments? No?
Thank you.
There's no other matters deemed necessary by the board. There is no need for a second executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.